Regular meeting, Thursday, December 1st, 2016, 5:30 PM. We're going to go ahead and have the invocation pledge by Ms. Trimmie.
Lord, tonight, we come with heavy hearts for our neighbors in Tennessee, in Gatlinburg, and Pigeon Forge, in those areas where the fires have destroyed hundreds of homes and businesses and lives, and then also in Alabama and the other states where there were tornadoes that hit wonderful people there and people's lives were lost. We have heavy hearts and we pray for them. And tonight, my prayer is, keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things. Make us to grow calm, serene, and gentle. Teach us to put into action our better impulses, straightforward and unafraid. Grant that we may realize it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life, we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And, oh Lord God, let us forget not to be kind. Amen.
Amen.
I'm glad to meet you. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Ms. Engepont.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Hornum had work obligations this evening. Mr. Guidry.
Here.
Mr. Hillary.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Latour's out of town on business. Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
And President Landry is also at the table.
I want to welcome you to our police jury meeting today. If you have a cellphone, we'd ask that you silence it, and if you have any blue slips, please bring them up to the front. President Landry's not here today, and I'm honored to be filling in for him tonight. With that being said, item four, we have a presentation by Mr. Jason French with Driftwood LNG regarding a proposal for a project in Calcasieu Parish. Jason, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me. Jason French, 1201 Louisiana Street, Houston, Texas, 77002.
Good address.
Thank you, Mr. Interim President, I suppose, members of the jury. You know, those interim tags have been getting removed here in Louisiana, so you better be careful. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I've had the opportunity in the last few weeks, since I came onboard with the Driftwood LNG team, to meet with many of you individually, those of you who I have not. You will be receiving a call probably very soon, but I wanted the opportunity to address the police jury and update you on something that is very exciting for us as a company, very exciting, I think, for this region, and make an introduction to, you know, there have been a, this region is very much the ground zero for an energy revolution in this country, and all the projects, the tens of billions of dollars of investment that have been announced in this area are certainly a sign of that. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to our team, to our project, and distinguish what it is that we'll be doing here. I spoke to you about a year ago, spoke to this jury about a year ago. At that time, I represented Cheniere Energy. I have moved on to a new role, but it is very exciting, very similar in what we're trying to do, but after five years in Cameron Parish, I'm going to be spending a lot of nights here in Calcasieu Parish, so I look forward to working with you, you all, much more closely than maybe I have had the chance to do over the last five years. Real quickly, as I said, I want to introduce the team, kind of distinguish the project. With so many LNG projects that have been announced around the country, and particularly in Louisiana, you know, in your mind, many of them may bleed together. When I talked to you a year ago, I talked about an energy revolution, and that very much has happened with the abundant supplies of natural gas we've been blessed with in this country and realize the opportunities to export. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight is less revolution, more evolution. It's the next step in the LNG industry that will continue to solidify. This region is ground zero for LNG development and shows a pretty bright future for this project and this community as well. Give you an overview of the project, talk about a little bit of our community work, and then just a quick look at the project timeline. One of the real things that distinguishes this project, as I've met with you individually, I've stressed, our founders, Sharif Sukhi was the founder and founder, former CEO and chairman of Cheniere Energy, who left the company last year and founded Tulurian Investments with Martin Houston. Martin Houston was the COO of BG, British Gas, which has now merged with Shell. BG was at the time the largest buyer of LNG in the world marketplace. Mr. Houston is considered to be, in those circles, in the global LNG markets, largely an architect of the modern LNG business. Between these two, they're generally considered the kind of the rock stars of the LNG industry, so there is some serious bandwidth and brain power when Mr. Houston and Mr. Sukhi came together to form this company. They hired his CEO of the company, Meg Gentle, who was president of Cheniere Marketing. Mrs. Gentle was responsible for the financing of $34 billion worth of projects in the United States, getting some of those long-term customers that allowed those projects at Sabine Pass, Cheniere's project at Sabine Pass, to be successful, to now actually be delivering gas into the global marketplace. Other folks who are involved in this, Keith Teague, was president of the asset group at Cheniere Energy. A lot of the folks, so senior folks there, have come over to be part of this, so I tell you that to let you know that the team that's behind that, this project, the senior management team behind this project, is a team that's done this, that is very committed to making this project happen and committed to working with this community to make the project happen. So, wanted to share that with you as well. The contractors who we're working with are another key point. Mr. Houston, Mr. Sukhi, Ms. Gentle have strong relationships with Bechtel, have developed, I believe, a number of trains all over the world, working with Bechtel, working with Chart Industries, working with GE. GE just this week announced a significant investment, equity investment, in Tulurian and the Driftwood LNG project. So, we have some big names in the industry, and that's all important because this team, one of the things that we're doing, when I tell you it's evolution, we've done large-scale projects in this country thus far, we've got a few under construction. This has been called more of a mid-scale project, but in fact, this project will be buying about 4 billion cubic feet of natural gas per day by the time it's up and fully operational. What we're doing, though, is we're going to offer, as we evolve as an industry, we've proven in the U.S. that we can do large-scale LNG. Now, we need to prove that we can do lower-cost LNG. So, we are getting into the process, refining the process, using some different technology, but fundamentally, we're doing the same thing. We're taking gas, the same gas that you bring into your house to heat a pot of water, we're taking that gas, cooling it down to negative 260 degrees, and putting it on ships for the global marketplace, and that's what's going to be happening here. Real quick overview of the project, we are, I don't have a, I was going through the presentation before I came in, there's not a really good map on here, but to tell you where we're at, we are down, we're in Calcasieu Parish, between mile marker 22 and 23 on the river, Burton Shipyard Road and Highway 27. Go down Burton Shipyard Road, you will get to the 800-acre site that we intend to build on. Facility will have production of about 26 million tons per year, but that equates to about 4 billion cubic feet a day of gas we'll be bringing into the facility. We'll be building five LNG plants. Here's one of the things that's different. When I talk to you about how we've evolved, an example of one of the mega-projects like Cameron LNG or Cheniere, they're building trains, what are called trains. That's simply the LNG production units that take that gas and turn it to a liquid. We've got some built-in efficiencies and redundancies in the way we're building. We're building five plants, each with four production units. It sounds like a small thing, but it allows you to scale up for the industry, it allows you to meet the market's needs. Customers don't always want one train's worth of gas. We're able to break out little pieces of those units, it allows redundancy when you're doing maintenance, you only have to shut down 25% of one plant instead of an entire plant, as you do in some of the mega-projects. Those are the type of efficiencies that we're building into the system as we evolve and produce lower-cost gas, and produce things that can meet the needs of customers who may not want to buy a full train's worth, which is a significant, significant amount of gas in a year. We're building those five plants, three tanks, three marine berths at the facility, as well as a 96-mile pipeline. When you're buying 4 billion cubic feet of gas a day, you need a pretty big pipeline to bring that in. So, we will have a pipeline that varies in diameter, but its biggest point is 48 inches in diameter, a 96-mile pipeline that will deliver the gas to the facility. I tend to bury the headline on costs on these things, but it is an important piece and important to the community when you think about the benefits that will come from it. This project, again, part of the evolution, will be producing about the same amount of gas as my former employer down in Cameron Parish, which was a $20 billion project. When I wore that hat, I often bragged about this was the most expensive project in the history of Louisiana. Well, now that I'm wearing a different hat, I want to tell you how it's great, how it's not as expensive. But this will be about a $12 billion project, still not insignificant, and the analogy I've always used, particularly with all these projects and all the word billion being thrown around, I always come back to the football analogy to tell folks how significant what we're building, you know, down Burton Shipyard Road and Global Drive, what we're actually building down there. We're building the equivalent, the financial equivalent, of 20 superdomes. If we were going to build the superdome in Calcasieu Parish, we could build 20 of them for the cost of what this project will be spent on this project. So, it is significant, and I think that always kind of highlights for people, really, the size and scope of what these investments are. This is just an artist's rendering of the facility that shows the five plants, the three tanks, and the three berths. This is a view of the, I don't know if you can see it on your screens, but the pipeline route cutting through four parishes and terminates in Evangeline Parish, but that's a 96-mile pipeline that will allow 13 different interconnects. That means that we'll be able to connect with a number of other pipelines that allow us to get that 4 billion cubic feet of gas that we need each day. I don't think I said in my introduction, I'm Vice President of Government and Public Affairs for the company, so this piece is going to be fleshed out a lot more in the coming weeks and months, but this is very important to me and to our company and to our management team, that we engage the community at every step of the way. We've done a lot of that thus far, working with agencies. To build a facility like this, you need to get over 40 major permits. That is not the easiest process in the world, but it is a very important process to protect resources, to make sure you're building this in a safe, environmentally sound way. We've made contact with all of the agencies, we are currently in the pre-filing process with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and will file our permit application in March of 2017. We've done five open houses, we've done scoping meetings with FERC thus far. I've been on the job for about six weeks and have met with a lot of people in this room, and like I said, those of you who haven't, you will be, I'll be hounding you soon. We are going to make sure that our neighbors in Calcasieu Parish are comfortable with what we're doing, that we're really partners with the parishes as we move forward on this project. The one thing I will mention on community outreach for all of you, if you have an interest in this, we plan to do a fairly aggressive meet-and-greet program. This is where we literally go into the neighborhoods, and if someone is kind enough that they'll open their homes to us and invite neighbors, we'll sit down with them, break bread, and answer any questions they have about the project, you know, to any concerns, whether it be about traffic, whether it be about how these facilities really operate and the safety of these facilities, and we do that pretty widely. You don't have to be a mile from the facility for us to do that, you know, I'll do those in Sulfur, I'll do those, anywhere where someone wants to hear about this project, I'll be there and bring other folks from our team, so that your constituents and the folks who live in the community are comfortable with what we're doing. Community benefits, just to give you an impact, an idea of the impact, we're going to have about 3,500 jobs on the construction side. The construction of this project will take about seven years, from beginning to end, till we're fully functional. Facility and pipeline operations, once in place, will have about 250 full-time permanent jobs in the area. We have not yet done the economic studies that will give an exact dollar figure as to the multiplier of what this project will do, but comparable projects have done studies in Louisiana as to what construction will mean over a seven-year period, and it can run anywhere up to $8, $8, $9 billion of secondary economic benefits for businesses in the region. So, we'd assume that that's what this project will deliver as well. And again, we're going to find ways, as we work with you, how we can best partner with the community, those benefits, many of those, we don't know what those are yet, but we're going to be partners with this jury and with this community and make sure we find ways that the community will benefit from this as well. And then finally, the project timeline, I've touched on this, we'll do the permitting. We'll file the application for permits in March of 2017. The plan is, the team that Sharif and Martin and Meg have pulled together, was pulled together for a reason, it was to make this happen as professionally and quickly as we possibly can. So, the quickest it is possible to get your permits is a year. So, we are, our timeline says we're going to have our permits in March of 2018. Soon after that, we would go to construction. We would have first LNG produced in 2022, fully complete, the entire facility built out by 2025. So, this is a long runway on this project, but a lot of work is happening now. We are preparing now, we are doing all the front-end engineering design work, we're working with our contractors to get the price to the point where this project's going to be very attractive to the global marketplace and ensure that this project moves forward. So, construction may not start for another 18 months, but a lot is happening now to make sure that this project succeeds. This is the disclaimer that the attorneys make you put in any PowerPoint presentation. Don't trade on any stocks or anything based on what I said, that's basically all it says, but that, and that's about it. So, I'm sorry, I may have gone a little, a couple minutes longer than I intended, but with this being the first presentation, just wanted to give you a general overview.
We have some comments or questions for some of the jurors. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, you said 800 acres. How much of that property is zoned properly, or how much of it is going to have to be rezoned?
I think all the property is zoned heavy industrial right now.
Heavy industrial?
Yeah, it's all.
Thank God.
Thank you.
Are you back?
Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Interim President. Mr. French, welcome back. The project is going to be bringing this natural gas from a location via pipeline throughout the United States, right? So, you're not actually importing natural gas?
No, so this is entirely designed as an export facility.
Right. It's worth noting what a revolution we've had in the past decade, you know, we had billion-dollar facilities a decade ago that we're talking about importing, and now we have facilities that are talking about local natural gas going throughout the United States and even exporting, so it is quite a revolution. And my other question is about housing, and it's more of a comment rather than a question. 3,500 temporary jobs, you know, we've had some projects come in, and I think in retrospect, we wish we would have had more conversations with the companies and the contractors about a housing plan for these employees. So, I would encourage you to have some conversations with stakeholders, contractors, local officials, about what is there a plan for housing 3,500 people, and could we come together and find out some plan rather than just having all these people come here and throwing up our hands and saying, "They'll find a way," you know? It's a suggestion.
It's a great point, it's an issue that we are well aware of, housing along with traffic, these are some of the issues that fall into my portfolio to get out there and do exactly what you're talking, start those conversations before the problems arise, work with parish administrator, Mr. Crane, everyone, and we've started having some of those discussions on the housing issue now, trying to get that stakeholder input and see the best way forward. There's challenges with every approach when you deal with the temporary housing issue, but we're trying to gain it, get input now, do some study into that issue, and want to get ahead of it before we get to 2018 in construction, so.
And one last question, the dredging of the Calcasieu Ship Channel, how important is that to your project, and in the future, will it be important?
You know, obviously, we'll be dredging the site, but obviously, the channel, yes. It's key when you're, when you're putting $12 billion into a project, you want to be able to ensure that the ships that'll be taking the cargo that pays for that $12 billion facility can get there, so keeping a clear dredge channel is key.
And I think this is yet another example of us being able to communicate with state delegation and federal delegation and say how important dredging that ship channel is to this area. A $12 billion project is nothing to sneeze at, and if we don't maintain the dredging of that channel, these projects won't be forthcoming in the future. So, I'm glad to have you here, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Interim President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Scott.
Thank you. To follow up on the dredging, when we talk, at this point, is it adequate, and are you planning on it being dredged better in your numbers? I'm just curious, because you've got to be looking at that, so I'm just...
So, I'm certain that we are looking at it. I hate to do this, I have, I'm going to throw the, "I've been on the job for six weeks" card and haven't gotten deep into the marine issues, but I will get that answer and get back to you tomorrow, but that is not, I'm trying to get up to speed on this one, I was in a different location on that last project and didn't have to worry about dredging as much.
All right, you don't have to get back, but I was just curious how you were looking. I'm sure it's figured in there. The second question, you mentioned transportation already, and a lot of the things that are about to be happening in the South Lake Charles area, those traffic improvements have already been being put in place, they're being worked on already, and they haven't started building, and you're talking about by the time you get started in 2018, well, you have already done the traffic improvements that DOTD and them are going to require for you to mitigate some of that?
So, we've been in, before I came onboard, the company had had conversations with DOT. My plan is to have some conversations in Baton Rouge with DOT next week. We'll be working with parish staff. Mr. Connor and I, it's the first time we've met face-to-face just now, we've been playing some phone tag and are going to work on some issues. Those are conversations we're having. From my perspective, as someone who is responsible for working with the community, being that good corporate partner, I think transportation is one of the biggest issues that we have to address on this, and working with the community for the folks who live around the proposed site, looking at improvement to access for, once we are under construction, making sure that, you know, turning lanes are in place, so that you're not having a backup on 27 because of trucks that are trying to access the site. Those are all discussions that we're diving into now, but are well aware of, and I can certainly, I can't commit to you what the end solution looks like, but we know that for this project, there likely are to need to be some additional improvements for this project, and much like on the housing issue, I'm in my introductory tour right now, talking to folks, but on the issues we're working on, housing and transportation are near the very top and will be what I'm dedicating much of my time to over the next year, and will be working with parish staff and DOT to make sure we do that.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Connor, maybe as, after y'all get a little more acquainted and you're really pushing forward, maybe you could get Ms. Cherie with MCOW, because, you know, Mayor Duncan in Sulfur is going to begin to be barking up this tree as soon as it's, so for Mr. Andrew Pont and Mr. Barris' sake, you know, make sure that we get a little bit broader and see how some of those other guys are feeling, and I think MCOW would be that good opportunity to do that, so, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other jurors, any other comments? Mr. French, Jason, thank you for being here.
We're happy, Jason. Thank you all very much.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1536.24] It's time, and so they're going to do that for us. We have a preliminary draft, Calchasue Parish Coastal Restoration Master Plan. We have not had one previously. Uh, we understand in Calchasue Parish that protecting Cameron Parish also protects Calchasue Parish, but we're also interested in seeing what projects we can do here in Calchasue Parish. And then a preliminary draft, multi-year implementation plan and matrix, which is required for the Restore Act funding. The Coalition to Restore Coastal Louisiana, also known as CRCL, uh, had a beach planting here, uh, well, actually on Holly Beach, on September 24th, 2016. A hundred and twenty-eight volunteers participated. Approximately 35,000 plugs of grass were planted, and two miles of beach fencing were added to help protect Cameron's coast for a total of six miles of protection. The Coastal Impact Assistance Program, also known as the SEAP program, um, was funded and funded the South GIWW project. This project refurbished approximately four miles of levees. It refurbished the levees, and they will restore and protect 2,500 acres from freshwater marsh, uh, from saltwater intrusion. The Calchasue Parish Police Jury was awarded grant funding of $1,927,833.34 from the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Service for the construction of this project. The, the police jury accepted substantial completion of this project at their November 17th, 2016 meeting. The Calchasue Parish River Salinity Control Project, it is estimated that Louisiana will receive $8.7 billion for Louisiana's coastal restoration. Locally, the CPRA chose to submit the Calchasue Parish Salinity Control Project for Restore Act funding. The project will manage the introduction of saltwater through the Calchasue River Ship Channel into adjacent water bodies. It will also restore and protect the ecosystem by reducing the rate of wetland loss in the surrounding wetlands. CPRA has begun engineering and design on the Calchasue River Salinity Control Project. Earthen rock and shee pile structures will be built along the Calchasue River, uh, Ship Channel with fish and boat gaps in order to reduce salinity. The project is expected to maintain over 21,000 acres of wetlands over 50 years. The estimated total engineering and design is 36.4 million, and the estimated total construction is 262.8 million dollars. At this time, I'm going to let Nedra Davis, the Executive Director, uh, come up and talk to you about the Cheniere Plain Coastal Restoration and Protection Authority.
If you would, name an address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Nedra Davis, I'm the Executive Director of the Cheniere Plain Coastal Restoration and Protection Authority, representing Calchasue, Cameron, and Vermillion Parishes.
And your address?
My address, seven, five, one, five, Jefferson Highway, Unit 322, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 70806.
Thank you, but it is protocol. Thank you.
Yes, sir. It just, I was, it's like my address, oh. So, um, the authority, um, was created in actually, uh, 2010, and they hired me in 2014 to start working on our, um, strategic plan and, um, putting together our authority's mission, which is to be the regional unifying voice of the people of Calchasue, Cameron, and Vermillion Parishes that champion coastal restoration and protection of a diverse ecosystem, a region of vital economic importance, and a culturally rich heritage, the Louisiana Cheniere Plain. This area, um, was brought together under this, uh, Regional Levy Board, um, to be a unified voice and, uh, for our coastal issues at the state and federal level. Uh, the, the Calchasue Police Jury has supported the authority since its inception, and, and including the most recent approval of assistance in the amount of $65,000 in 2016. Uh, our authority is a nine-member board, three members from each parish. I'm the Executive Director. Your Calchasue Parish members are Mike Dever, who is in the audience, Kay Barnett, and David Minton. Uh, we also have representatives from Vermillion Parish, Mr. Earl Landry, Mr. Alvedrine, and Ms. Sky Segarra. And from Cameron Parish, we have Mr. Ryan Boryak, Ms. Ernestine or Tina Horn, and Mr. Philip Trossclaire or Scooter, as most people know him. Uh, our next, uh, meeting date is going to be, uh, December 13th in Abbeville, and we changed the time to 5:00 PM. We're going to have a little bit early so that we can have a Christmas gathering afterwards. Currently, I'm working on putting together, um, changes to our, uh, our levy statutes. Uh, I'm working with the team of people with Mr., with Representative Walter Legay, and we are looking at making all of the coastal zone levy boards, um, up to the same standards. We have several levy boards that were created after 20, 2006, after Katrina, and the Cheniere Plain Authority, Iberia, St. Tammany, and St. Mary don't have the same, uh, abilities as the other coastal levy boards have. And so we're working to change those statutes in the next legislative session. We're also working with our congressional members to inform our, um, our Congress, our House and Senate about how important this area is. We have the Southwest Coastal Study, which has $3.3 billion with the projects in it. And we are looking at going into 2017, trying to get those projects into appropriations into the President's 2018 budget. So, we'll be visiting with our congressional members, and, and we will be, um, talking about how important, uh, the southwest, uh, economics, culture, uh, ecological issues are for, uh, the nation. So, those are some of the things that we're working on at the state and the federal level. Do y'all have any questions?
Any jurors? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
About the Cheniere Plain? We have one more slide, but I just...
Oh. Well, why don't we wait till she's finished with the presentation?
We'll do that, and we'll have comments after that.
Okay. All right. So, the last slide is about the National Ocean Council Governance Coordinating Committee. And I don't know if, uh, uh, Mr. Scott wants to say a few words about that?
I can, but if you want to ask questions first, I can wrap it up on there.
Okay, we'll let, we'll, you got one more slide, or?
This is it.
Okay. You're done with that? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you. Um, remind me about the taxing authority of levy boards. I believe in southeast Louisiana, they do have taxing authority?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Um, levy boards that were created prior to 2006 have a constitutional five mills, automatically. And most of those levy boards have been in existence for such a time that in addition to those five mills, they have additional millages and taxes associated with those boards. And so, that's, that five mills is the baseline. And so, uh, the work that we're doing right now is to bring the levy boards that were created post-2006 up to that baseline.
Those that were created before 2006, some of those are very old levy boards.
Some of them are, are, but...
Seven years old, some of them, right?
Some of them are historically very old, but there are many that, um, have the constitutional five mills that were created in the last 20 or 40 years versus going back to some of them that are historical, really. You know, anything over 50 years is really historical, but, you know, some of those levy boards in, like, La Fouch, for example, and Terrebonne go back almost 100 years.
Yeah. And who determines the geographic boundaries of those levy boards?
The, the coastal zone is determined by, um, legislation through the Department of Natural Resources, and they have the coastal zone map, and those levy boards are divided out, um, according to the parishes and according to the parishes that belong to the authorities. So, for example, Calchasue, Cameron, and Vermillion are part of the Cheniere Plain Authority, and there's other authorities, uh, the, the CEFLA East and West are made up of multiple parishes, and the Ponson Train Levy District is also, I believe, made up of nine, nine parishes.
Okay. So theoretically, we have a levy board in southwest Louisiana that could potentially one day have taxing authority?
Yes. Yes. It, even if, even if they decide not to statutorily change and give us a constitutional, we still, according to statute, statute, have the ability to go to the people, to vote on a millage, and once that's in place, you can go the next step further. But you have to do the millage first. You can't do any kind of other kind of taxing structures. You have to do the millage first.
Hmm. And the baseline millage, that would obviously still be have, have to be something that the people would vote on.
Yeah, up to five mills, yes.
Up to five mills?
Mm-hmm.
Because you'd mentioned the word constitutionally dedicated for some of the other levy boards?
Yes.
But when that happened, there was a vote of the people. That wasn't something that...
It's a, it goes on the ballot, yes.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice President, if I don't...
Yes.
Nedra, if you can clarify, I may be wrong on this. I believe if they, that authority proposes a, a millage, a tax call, obviously it's three parishes. I believe it has to pass in each parish, even though it's three parishes wide.
Yes, it can't, if it only passes in two parishes, then it fails.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any other jurors? Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Interim President. Um, I just want to let y'all know that we do have a, a great team here, and with Nedra and Laurie both being on the CPRA, you know, southwest Louisiana has now got a very strong voice when it comes to preserving and protecting the Gulf Coast of southwest Louisiana. Not only that, but as we continue to move forward, you know, we have the Cheniere Plain Authority, they have a great group of people. Those nine names that were just mentioned are well-known across the state for all the work they have done for years and years. But the millions and billions of dollars that are now beginning to trickle into southwest Louisiana, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we are losing a dear friend in Congressman Boo Stanney. He has been a champion of southwest Louisiana and our coastal efforts for many years now. So, we can only hope that our next Senator and our next Congressman will champion southwest Louisiana the same way, because we're going to need that help, especially when you hear price tags of 30 to 50 billion dollars. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that our coastal team is working hard, and they're continuing to strive to, to bring more funding here to, to southwest Louisiana, because we need it, you know? And I know you want to keep duck hunting and not just boat riding, so you're going to need a little piece of land to stand on.
There we go.
So, with that, uh, and it's going to continue to bring in things like this National Ocean Council, and I'm honored to be able to sit with 18 other elected officials across this nation, uh, to the Office of the White House. And to hear different, uh, people do things different ways and to learn from each other. One of the things that I was able to learn is the, uh, our tribal groups, our Native American groups have a lot of pull and a lot of push when it comes to coastal issues, because they've been here the longest. And so, we don't use that asset yet with our Homa tribe and all these other tribes. So, that's just the next step for this group, is how do we think regionally? And when we talk about regionally, right now, there's only two regional planning bodies. One's in the northern Atlantic and one's in the mid-Atlantic. Our Gulf Coast is as important as it is and as much money it, as it produces, there is no regional planning board to look at the Gulf Coast as one big unit and say, this is how it needs to function, and what can we do together to make it work better? So, uh, that's the next task we're going to take on. We want to see this regional planning board get on board. So, all the information that's out there can be put in one place so that everybody can access it. So, thank y'all for y'all's time tonight. I appreciate y'all listening to all this good stuff, and if you have any questions, any of these ladies will be glad to sit with you and spend a few minutes.
Thank you.
Any other jurors? Ms. Davis, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, for your presentation. Before we go, Mr. Scott, I want to say thank you for your passion in representing this jury and what you do with our coastal restoration. We all, we all lean to you when it comes to that, and thank you for what you do on our behalf as an entire jury. Thank you for being there. With that being said, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objection? We'll move to the next item. Thank you. Item six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. Vice President, uh, we have three applications before you tonight. We recommend they be approved.
Move. Second. I got a motion by Mr. Gilry, second by Mr. Andrew Port. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approval payments on all current invoices. Move.
Move on seven.
Uh, move by Mr. Andrew Port, and second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item eight, consideration approving the minutes of the regular meeting Police Jury, second, dated November 3rd, 2016. Motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carried. Item nine, consideration approving personal, uh, Personal Policy Review Committee Report, dated November 29th, 2016. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President, or Interim President, I'm sorry. Uh, the Personnel Policy Committee of the Police Jury met at 4:30 PM on November 29th and received a report from staff regarding proposed changes and updates to the parish, parish's Human Resource Policy Manual. A few highlights from that report are as follows. Reorganized and rewrote the Human Resource Manual to allow for information to be more, more easily located and more easily understood. Added and updated policies governed by federal and state legislation, amendments to the Union Contract, and common practice, including the American with Disabilities Act and the ADA Amendments Act. Ethics policy, Louisiana Board of Ethics requirements, and the most recently, the parish's, parish's smoking policy. Included policies related to the maternity and paternity in an effort to increasingly recruiting and retention of quality talent. The committee recommendation adopt, recommends adoption of the Human Resources Policy as amended to be effective January 1st, 2017.
Is the motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
Second.
Out of motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Gilry. Any discussion on that motion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 10, consideration approving the Budget Committee Report, dated December 1st, 2016. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. Interim President. Uh, the Budget Committee of the Police Jury met today, at, at 5:00 PM today, and held a public hearing on, to receive comments on the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2017. After hearing comments, the committee made a motion to recommend approval of the parish budget for fiscal year 2017 at the Police Jury's Regular Meeting on December 15th, 2016. The committee also recommended approval of a funding request by the Vinton Harbor and Terminal District in the amount of $200,000 for a dredging project at the mouth of the Vinton Navigational Channel, where it enters the Gulf Intracoastal Waterway. That is the end of my report, and I move.
Second. Out of motion, uh, by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, consideration adopting resolution approving cooperative endeavor agreement between the Police Jury and the City of Lake Charles to reimburse the city for the parish share of certain water and sewer infrastructure projects in the casino area encompassing Le Berge Casino and the Golden Nugget Resort in the amount of $2 million. I need a motion? So moved.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Gilry. Any discussion on item 11? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 12, consideration adopting resolution approving calls for election, held on April 29th, 2017, by the Board of Commissioners of the following special districts. I'm going to go through each one of the all bullets. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Port, and a second by Mr. Gilry on all bullets. I'm going to go through the bullets. A, Community Center and Playground District 4 of Ward 1, authorizing renewal and levy collection of special tax of five mills on all property taxation for a 10-year period purpose of paying and cost of maintaining operating public buildings and community centers, including playground, parks, playgrounds, and recreation centers and libraries. Item B, gravity drainage, number two of Ward 7, authorizing and renewal levy collection and special tax of 10 mills on all property subject to taxation for a period of 10 years for the purpose of maintaining construction and improving gravity drainage works within the territorial limits of that district. Item C, Ward 2, fire protection, District 1, authorizing and levy collection special tax of eight mills on all property subject to taxation, a period of 10 years for the purpose of maintaining operating district's fire protection facilities, including related land, buildings, equipment, furnishings, constituting all works and permanent public improvements. Item D, Ward 7, fire protection, District Number 1, authorizing and renewing and levy collection and special taxes, uh, 10 mills on all property subject to taxation, period of 10 years for the purpose of paying and cost of maintaining operating existing fire protection facilities for said district. I have a motion and second on all bullets on item 12. Is there any discussion on any of these bullets? Mr. Hunter?
Mr. McMillan, on item C, you missed a word that begins with A. I was going to see if you could just put that in the record, please. After equipment?
Item C?
Yeah. Buildings, equipment, and...
Apuriturensis.
Okay.
Is that good?
It's something.
Epiratus. That went on.
What is? Thank you.
I think I skipped it on purpose.
I know you did.
There you go.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, for pointing that out. Bust. Epiratus. Look at that. Wasn't sure of the pronunciation, so you skipped it.
Somebody to pronounce it.
There we go. Any other discussions?
That's what you get for making an option there.
Yes. Able to be unable to buy. Here we go. We'll go quickly. Any objection? All those bullets carried on item 12. Item 13, consideration adopting...
Move on 13, all bullets.
Second. I got a motion by Mr. White, and second by Mr. Andrew Port on 13, all bullets, and we'll read them into the record. It's consideration of a resolution approving items to Coach Williams Extension Project located Ward 4. Item A, Act of Sale Agreement for the Purchased Property Full Fee Ownership Among the Utility Servitude of Bradley Hamlet. Act of Sale Agreement to Purchase Property of Full Fee Ownership of Dale, Robert Dale Rigbiden. Expropriation of Property Full Free Fee Ownership, as well as expropriation of temporary construct and servitude utilities. And D, expropriation of properties and full free ownership from, and they don't have them highlighted, so I'm not going to read them all. Item E, Quick Claim D Agreement for Mrs. Catherine P. LaRocca. F, Servitude Agreement Sabine River Authority, State of Louisiana. G, Utility and Drainage Servitude Agreements. That's all bullets on item 13. I have a motion by, who was it? Who was my motion and second? He erased it.
By Mr. White and Francis.
By Mr. White, second by Mr. Andrew Port. Any discussion? Discussion? Mr. Scott?
Real quick, Mr. Connor, are we getting close with all this right-of-ways and land agreements now? I know these, every month we do several of them, so I'm just curious how close we are on that.
About the middle of last month. We were about 65% complete on our right-of-way acquisitions, so we're continuing to make steady progress, and, uh, I expect us to be on time. Nothing has changed.
So, the design and everything's ready to, I mean, that's, we, cool. Thank you.
We're getting close.
And sort of directing, I question back to you, I think going through these different bullets will be kind of the, the last ones that we really need to move this forward project, uh, this project forward quickly.
Right. We're, we're getting down to the, uh, the hard cases, and so we're, we're moving on those as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries on all bullets. Item 14, consider adopting resolution...
Move on 14, all bullets.
Accepting the following projects have substantially complete. Item A, Calchasue Parish Project 2015-09, Arthur Oreg Road Bridge Replacement. Item B, Calchasue Parish Project 20116-03, overlaying various roads in Calchasue Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Gilry, second by Mr. Collins on item 14. Is there any discussion? Any...
I just want to say one thing.
Ms. Trimmie? Ms. Trimmie?
Yeah, I want to thank our staff in working hard and pushing the contractor on Arthur Oreg Road Bridge. It was out quite a long time, and people kind of were getting antsy, so thank you. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you for your patience.
A motion, second, but any more discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 15, consideration of adopting a resolution approving...
Move.
...parish participation in the federal off systems, bridge rehabilitation replacement program in agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation Development. I have a motion by Mr. Andropont, and second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion on item 15? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 16.
So moved.
Consideration of adopting ordinance, rescinding ordinance 6593 adopted on September 3, 2015 due to prospective bidder failing to fulfill the necessary requirements in order to complete the sale. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Guidry on item 16. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. No, I was the other way around, by Mr. Gilery and Mr. Guidry. Item 17, consideration of adopting resolution approving amendment following documents that relates to Louisiana Office of Community Development, Community Water Enrichment Fund Project. Item A, Community Water Enrichment Fund 2014-2015 Grant Application. Item B, Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the police jury and Water Works District Number 8 of Ward 3, Ward 8. Those two bullets. I need a motion, second on 17.
Move on 17. Second.
Motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 17 carries. Item 18, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a professional service...
Move on 18.
...contract between Calquashu Parish Police Jury Educational and Treatment Council for Emergency Shelter Care and Treatment Services relating to childrens and families involved in juvenile justice system. I have a motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Scott on item 18. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 18 carries. Item 19, take appropriate action on bids received by Calquashu Parish purchasing agent for the following. A, Burton Elevator Upgrades. The project architect recommends low bid and alternate in the amount of $588,000. My Sammy's Construction, be accepted.
A and B.
Item B, Calquashu Parish Emergency... We'll take that one at a time. We'll do item A. We got a motion, well, go ahead, do item B, do all bullets. Calquashu Parish Emergency Training Center Safe Room Project, project architect recommends a low bid in the amount of $1,741,000. Pat Williams constructed, be accepted. Item C, one ton four-wheel-drive crew cab truck used for animal service adoption center. Item D, one class six cab chassis truck, truck-mounted utility signs, body for engineering and public works. I got a motion on item 19 and all bullets.
I have a question, Mr. Interim President.
I have a motion by Mr. Brain, and second by Mr. Collins. Discussion, Ms. Trimmie?
Thank you. The question I have is...
Mr. Brain.
The safe room, is that going to be built on Hallbrook Park Road where the training center is? I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Is Mr. Barnes here? I have a question about the Burton project. I just would like to know what the alternate number one is. What does that mean? Is there a possibility that we might have to... Mr. Barnes, could you just explain to me what is alternate or alternative number one?
The alternate number one was a third elevator on the east side. The, there was an old, original elevator from the original construction that had been out of order for a long period of time, and it was in that as an alternate to add that in as well.
So, are we moving forward with both the base bid and the alternate number one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Any other discussion on item 19 and all bullets?
There was a clarification.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 20, take appropriate action on terms of following members of various boards and districts. Take these one at a time. Item A, Mrs. Carrie Vick, Community Center Playground District Number 7 of Ward 2.
Fur for 30 days? Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hunter to fur for 30 days, second by Mr. White. On item A. Item B, Mr. Scott Dore, resignation, Community Center Playground District 1, Ward 4, Ward...
Move on the resignation and appoint of Matt Sonnier. Second.
Motion by Mr. White to appoint Mr. Matt Sonnier, second by Mr. Collins. I'm going to come back to you at the end on these two guys. C, Mr. Mike Sanders.
Move on the resignation and appoint Mr. Joe Gentry.
Got a motion by Mr. White to appoint Mr. Joe Guidry, second by Mr. Collins, Joe Gentry Jr. Item D, Mrs. Ann Ritchie, southwest Louisiana, Commission of Visitors Bureau.
So moved to appoint Ms. Ritchie.
Well, the following names were nominated and submitted. We have three names, and I think they would like to go with the first name from what I've heard of the three, if you would like to nominate that one. Ms. Trimmie?
Is that Mark Laverne?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you kept me on Mark.
Yes.
I actually had my paper over here, but I didn't...
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie to nominate Mr. Mark Laverne, and second by Mr. Guidry.
Now, on the second one, if you can...
Any discussion? Any objection on that? Item E, Mr. Rod King, southwest Louisiana...
This is a little bit confusing, but appoint Bob King.
Mr....
Second.
Nominate Mr. Bob King. Second. Motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Any objection on that? Motion carries.
Thanks, but I swear I got caught up.
Item F, Mrs. Evelyn White, West Calquashu Community Authority.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Trimmie, and second by Mr. Andropont to reappoint. Those are all the bullets on item 20. We have motion and second. There's no discussion. I would like to go back to Mr. White on item, let's see, that would be item D and C. Mr. White?
We lost two good guys with the Community Center Playground Districts, Mr. Scott Dore and Mike Sanders. Scott Dore come on board and was, had, really had a good vision for the community playground. He really did a lot of things. Mr. Mike Smith was on the board for a number of years. Him and his dad both had 50 years between them on that board, and they've done a lot of good things on that board. We've replaced them with two great guys. When they called and asked about these gentlemen, I was more than happy to say, yes, these are young guys. They're in the trenches every day with their kids at the field, and I expect great things out of these guys for that playground district. But I would like to say and give a so-long farewell for Mr. Scott Dore and Mr. Sanders. They have done an excellent job at our playground district. Thank you. I'll go back.
Any other discussion on item 20? Hearing none, no objection, all those motions carry. On item 21, we want to consider adopting a resolution reaffirming the following appointments. I would ask our council, do we need to take these individually, or can we do them all at once?
I think you do all these at once.
Okay, I'm going to read them, and then I'll take a motion and a second at the end, if y'all don't mind. Mrs. Evelyn Washington, Calquashu Parish Library Systems, Mrs. Monique Dill, Mr. Chad Kellogg, Community Center and Playground District 1 of Ward 6, Mr. John Simeon, Community Center and Playground District Ward 4 of Ward 1, Mr. Kenny Ashworth, Community Center Playground District Ward 5. Of 5, Mr. Blaine Harrington, Mr. Craig Schultz, Mr. Ricky Guidry, Gravity Drainage District 9 of Ward 2, Mr. Joshua Underwood, Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 8, Mr. Keith Begno,